The Union, everybody, the study session of July twelfth, twenty twenty-two is called to order. Donald, would you please do a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
All right. I see we have an audience tonight. This is a study session and we won't be taking any public comment and we'd love to hear you next Tuesday. All right. Tonight, we're discussing our twenty twenty-three legislative priorities. Troy Nichols has a presentation for us. You're on.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, in particular you, Mr. Mayor, for being the only other one in the room wearing a tie. It makes me feel not completely out of whack, but appreciate the opportunity to visit with you. I know we have some new faces. I don't know if I've met Councilmember Gutierrez before, but nice, nice to see you. Hard to believe, for those of you that don't know, I have own Phillips Burgess Government Relations and this, we're going into our sixth legislative session working together. So, time flies when you're having fun and it's worked out really well. So if we go ahead and hit the next slide, we can talk about kind of the, the quick program that we're going to go through tonight and then happy to answer any questions and get a dialogue going for our agenda next session. So, we're just going to talk about some of the previous successes that we've had, get the wheels turning in terms of the accomplishments that we've had and the projects that we've got funded over the last several biennium. Talk a little bit about the elections, how they may or may not impact our agenda next session. And then the operating capital and transportation budget dynamics, they always change and, it'll kind of frame what we should be looking for and how we prioritize our ass next session and then open it up for any questions that anybody might have. So, go ahead and shoot the next slide. I apologize for the font. I wasn't sure how big of a screen. So if you're having trouble, I can, I can read things. But just wanted to go through some of the things that we've, we were successful in attaining last few sessions and, last year was a pretty big year. We did get the two hundred and six thousand dollars for the Shelton Police Department parking facility in the capital budget. And then we got a big chunk of our headworks capacity upgrade project that we asked for and a lot that came out of actual federal dollars. And as I talked to Jeff and many of you before the session started, you kind of have to just be in the right place at the right time when some of those federal dollars appear and you have to have a legitimate, project to get funded. We were there and credit to the city staff for putting together a good request and we got that funded. So, that was pretty big. And a similar story from the previous session in twenty twenty-one with the ARPA money, the COVID dollars from the federal government, we ended up getting two big projects, funded out of those dollars in the capital budget, the well-won water main and reclaimed water project. And I know we've asked for different pieces of those over the years, but to get those both fully funded was a, a big deal. And then my personal favorite, I made Jeff work hard for this one, put him on the phone with the governor staff and many of our members of our delegation. But we were able to get that transfer from the waste tire removal account in the transportation budget, to take care of the outstanding balance on the Lake Homer Agreement, which is really, putting a crimp in our ability to expand as a city and grow. And I look forward to attending many ribbon cuttings in the future, as, as progress gets made out there, hopefully. So, next slide. Twenty twenty was a little bit of a lean year. We did get that, Lake Homer Agreement as a proviso in the transportation budget, but the governor ended up vetoing that. And because some eighteen amendment concerns, but to his credit, his staff's credit and our delegation, we kept at it and were able to get it the following year. So that was a big deal. Then, of course, the Shelton YMCA, they needed an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to kind of close, their budget. And my wife Julie probably deserves way more credit for that one than, than I deserve. I know it was an official city project, but we were, supportive of that effort and were able to get that done. The previous session, Walt Wallace Neeland, Shelton Springs intersection in the transportation budget, not sure if we've started turning dirt there yet or,
Not quite yet.
In the plans, but that, that's still in the budget, gets re-appropriated every biennium if it's not spent. We get too far out and they'll, they might come and start answering, asking questions, but I think we're, we're still moving forward on that. The Civic Center Parking Lot, city manager just told me that we're doing bids here in the next week or so. So that's exciting. I know, Councilmember McDowell is a big proponent of that project. And then the initial grant for the YMCA in the building community funds in the capital budget. You know, that cut line for those projects moves up and down. There was a time during that session, if I'm remembering correctly, where we didn't make the cut. And so we helped with our, our Shelton YMCA team and were able to get that line moved down. So, they, they got that big initial grant and that was a huge win for them. One of my favorites, the first session, I was representing you in Olympia, we, that downtown connector project, every time I drive through there, it's, it's amazing how much that's really changed that area. And I, I think it's worked out for the best once people figured out the roundabouts and stopped complaining. I'm sure, everybody, everybody's a supporter now. And then Timberland Library repairs, and I know there's some ongoing issues there and we might have a, we, we tried to get some resources. Last session, we might come back again if, if there's another opportunity there. So just a kind of a walk down memory lane. So next slide. Elections are always upon us and this year is a, is a big election year, as all of you know. Just to give you kind of a quick snapshot of where we're at, Democrats currently in Olympia enjoy, comfortable margins, twenty twenty-one in the Senate, fifty-seven, forty-one in the House. The expectation is, and this is, this is an objective statement, just based on my conversations, both with Republican and Democrat House leadership in the House and Senate. Everybody's sort of expecting the margins to shrink. Now, it's just a question of how, how much that, how much those numbers will change. You know, just going back to the twenty twenty elections, all this money spent, all this campaigning is in the margins in both chambers didn't change at all. They were, the, the numbers were the same after all that fighting and activity. And I, I'm not predicting that that's going to happen again. I do think that it will get closer. It's just a question of how much. Then, you know, you have Speaker Jenkins from Tacoma still returning, Senate Majority Leader Andy Bilig, he's in the Spokane area. There, I think Speaker Jenkins obviously is up for reelection. She's in a fairly safe seat, as is Leader Bilig. So we expect them to return. And then Senator Braun and JT Wilcox, the Senate and House Republican Caucus leaders, they're both coming back. Actually, Senator Braun isn't up for reelection this time. And then the chairs that we, the committees that we typically care about the most, particularly capital budget and transportation budget, I don't expect any major changes there. If, if the Republicans take control of one party, you'll probably see a flip in terms of chair versus the ranking member. But, you know, Speaker, Representative Phi, who shares the House Transportation Committee, he's, he's likely coming back. Representative Andrew Barkus for the second legislative district, he's the ranking Republican. And, then, you know, it's kind of the same, those, those two budget committees, they require, they're different than normal policy committees in that they require bipartisan cooperation. Because in the state of Washington requires a super majority in the legislature to pass bonds. And so the minority party typically gets much more of a say in those budgets, than they do in, say, the operating budget for in a policy committee because of that, that sixty percent requirement to pass the general obligation bond. So, I know when I was a staff in the legislature, I enjoyed working on capital budget committee because you had to work together and everybody kind of had their, their say and, and that was definitely enjoyable. And then here in the thirty-fifth, you know, we all know Representative Drew McEwen is running for the Senate, Senator Tim Sheldon is retiring. Representative Griffey's running for reelection. And there, so he'll most likely be back. And then Representative McEwen's replacement, there's a pretty robust primary on the Republican side there. So we'll know who our next likely representative will be after, after the August primary. But in terms of the partisan makeup, I don't expect too much to change for our, our own homegrown representatives and center. So, next slide. We don't typically get involved too much on behalf of the city in the operating budget. We will from time to time, but, the operating budget sort of drives the session dynamics overall. So I thought I'd just spend a quick, quick second talking about this. The revenue forecast continued to be very rosy, even this last one in June. You see there, they, they're projecting an additional one point four or five billion in the current biennium and then an additional six hundred and thirty-two, higher for the next biennium. So the numbers keep getting better. But we have experienced a twenty, more than twenty-four percent increase now in spending from the previous biennium to this current one. So, put a pin in that because that will, that could create problems down the road. If you look at the session outlook for next year, and you've seen this, heard this from me before, roughly seventy-five percent of the state budget is quote-unquote constitutionally protected. Now you can, there are differing opinions on what's protected and whatnot. But the majority of it is sort of dedicated in either pensions or K through twelve from the McCleary decision a few years ago, labor contracts, and of course debt service on capital and transferred capital, general obligation bonds. So, when you have to make significant cuts, there's only so many places in the operating budget that you can go. We also operate in Washington State using the current service level budgeting. That means when they craft the next biennium, biennium's budget, they start with the services that are currently being provided and they just roll that up to the next biennium and that's where the discussion starts. So, with that previous increase that we're enjoying right now and a potential recession looming, or at least a slowdown in the economy, things can get pretty tight pretty quick. And that, if that happens, that will drive a lot of the discussion starting in January. So, next slide. And continuing on into the capital budget. So when you have shrinking resources for the operating, especially in an economic downturn, there creates this tremendous pressure for legislators to sweep funds from the capital budget. Now, you can't sweep operating, you can't sweep general obligation bonds for the operating side. But there are a lot of other resources that flow into the capital budget, like MACHA funds, other, you know, the Public Works Assistance Account. Those things tend to become targets because it's much easier to sweep funds than it is to raise taxes, especially during a recession. So, we need to be wary of that. There are still some federal resources left. I've already started talking with, with capital budget staff on what still might be available, depending on what we want to go after next session. But a lot of that has been spent already. So, and I don't know that another round will be coming. I know there's some discussion at the federal level, on the president's Build Back, Build Back Better program and scaling that back. We'll see if that gets through the process, but I don't, I don't know that we'll have a lot of resources in addition to what we already have received from the federal government. Bond capacity tracks revenues and the way our constitution reads, it's, I believe, right now eight point two five percent of general, state revenues, but it's got over a six-year average. So all this revenue that we're, that's been pouring in, even without tax increases, is going to boost that bond model up. And so we had almost four billion in bond, geo bond capacity last session. We expect to have even more this, this biennium. So that creates more opportunities for us to secure resources. And then typically, when we go after things like the library, the parking lot, or even, you know, some of the larger water projects that we've been successful, we usually get them, through, through the local community projects portion of the capital budget. This is where our delegation asks for resources for specific projects. And we've been pretty successful over the last couple of biennium on that. But just to give you a little perspective, you've seen this, I update this every time I've talked, but, in the last by, this current biennium, there were, there was two hundred and fourteen million dollars allocated for three hundred and sixty-five projects all over the state. But the average size of each grant or project is about five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And, but that range is anywhere from two thousand dollars to up to four point five million, at least in this current biennium. The bigger the number, the harder it is to get, because it's a big state with forty-nine legislative districts and you got to spread the love. So, going for big number of projects, while not impossible, decreases the likelihood of our, our success. And, you know, we've had some discussions about our, our strategy there, but, that just gives you a little perspective of the, the universe that we're playing in. So, next slide. And just, this is a history lesson for some of you, and I've showed this slide before, but just capital projects for your information in the capital budget usually, typically include land acquisition, acquisition of buildings, construction for new buildings, major repairs. Not the minor work stuff, but the, the tall dollars that are required for major repairs for state and local buildings, utility landscaping, infrastructure. Planning and design is available too. And then, for those of you that have seen those LPC requests, LCP request forms, the, the Department of Commerce takes its, it's two percent for, for overhead after everything that we get. So there's always typically some of that included. And then the general rule of thumb, a useful life of at least thirteen years and involve at some point, point in the construction of the project, an architect or an engineer. And this is because these general obligation bonds are up, they obligate the taxpayers to pay back over twenty-five years. So they take it very seriously. And our credit rating over the decades in Washington State has been very good. Because in the capital budget, they follow these rules and don't get into trouble. So it's paid off. And next slide. Just a little bit on, on the transportation budget and, you know, we've had success getting resources here before, way, way back and, you know, Councilmember Schmidt knows this probably better than I do. We didn't have an opportunity to get local projects through the, the capital or the transportation budget from the state. That changed a couple of decades ago and they've been able to, to allocate resources for local projects, which is, we've got the Roundabout Connector and some other things. But because of COVID and a drop, huge drop in revenue, particularly in the multimodal account, they basically put a, a ban or a halt on any new local projects in the previous biennium. Now, whether there's going to be resources this go around is still kind of up in the air. I did have a conversation with Representative Barkis just in the last couple of days. He, his preference would be, to add back money so we can fund some of these important local projects. But he's not the chair, so he doesn't get to be the ultimate decider there. But he does have a good rapport with the Chair, Chairman Phi, and, and I know that they'll be talking between now and January about how they're going to approach that. Just a quick word on the, the Move Ahead Washington Project. That was a seventeen billion dollar package, had a bunch of new resources, fees, grants. One-time state and federal funds. And then, of course, the biggest portion of that seventeen billion was the new carbon fee for the new cap and trade program, which is being implemented in January. And then all that money was spent on some significant statewide major road projects. Active transportation, that's like the bike lanes, pedestrians, transit, alternative fuel, ferries, fish passage removal and others. This was, transportation package was fairly unique. In typically, you have bipartisan support, for those and usually involves a big gas tax increase. The Democrats' last session chose to forego that and, pass this budget with just only Democratic votes, which they can do. And the reason they didn't need cooperation from Republicans is they didn't, this package doesn't rely on any bonding. So you need that super majority to, to pass bonds, but they, the entire package doesn't include any, any state bonding. So, we're kind of up in the air to see where we're going to be on the local project front. But I'm not shy, so I'm happy to ask if we do have some things and some needs. I just don't know if the resources are going to be available for. So, with that, I think last question is the, the question slide. So, you know, that's a lot to spill out in the last fifteen minutes, but happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Do you know of any funding sources that were pulled from out fiscal biennium in any of the operating or capital budgets?
Pulled out with a plan for future and they accelerated it to current biennium?
And it's, and if so, does that, would that impact local projects at all, do you think?
Not that I'm aware of, at least that, that Move Washington package, obviously things are earmarked because it's a, I think it's a sixteen-year, horizon that they're looking at. You know, one, one legislature can't bind the next. So if the future legislature decides to pull the plug on some of that stuff, I think that they can. But we didn't, we didn't get anything in the City of Shelton in that package. I know Belfair got some, a significant investment in their, problems that they're having, but we just didn't have anything on the list. So, those are all sort of ongoing incoming revenues. And so I don't know that the, the future or the status of that package will impact the actual transportation budget and our ability to secure local money for local projects.
I just have one fact. I did some quick math on your first two slides and in five years, you've helped the City of Shelton acquire sixteen point two million dollars in state funds.
Yeah, that's pretty close. I don't take full credit for the YMCA stuff, but.
That's pretty awesome. I just wanted to highlight that. I think that's.
Well, I made the joke last time I was here that Jeff was going to change my contract to a commission base.
Ten percent.
I'm looking forward to that. No, no, it's been great. And it's, I, I, I appreciate the, the compliment, but I also know that it was a team effort, all of you and city staff has just been phenomenal over those years. And I, I know there've been some changes and it's not always been easy. And really, ultimately, our delegation deserves a lot of the credit too, because I give them the info and then they go to bat for us in those negotiation rooms and they do really do a great job. And, I expect that that's not going to change in, in the outgoing years too.
How could you explain what the new carbon fee is?
So that's really a tax on the carbon emissions of the top emitters in the state of Washington. So they're going to set a limit and then slowly ratchet that down. And then I believe they're going to set up a way for the major polluters to, or emitters to, buy credits from each other. Or it's just going to force basically them to retool and, and over time eventually reduce their carbon emissions down to zero. But it's, I want to say it's fifteen dollars per ton. And it moves up, I believe, to twenty-five eventually. I think there's a phase into that fee. But there's a tremendous amount of rulemaking that's involved in that and they're, they're starting that, they're going through that process right now. But I think they're going to start charging companies the fee January one. I think that's when it starts. And then it's, it's going to drive, I mean, it's, five billion dollars, of that fee is going into that transportation package. It's going to generate a lot more than that for other areas over the years. So.
But we're trying to get down to carbon free. Do you have, you probably don't know how, how long that might take.
Well, I'm trying to think of where we are in our current commitment. So there is some commitment in state statute that we're supposed to be, half of our nineteen ninety emissions by twenty fifty. It sound, I, I, I don't quote me on that because I might not be right, but we passed that law a long time ago. So I don't, I don't remember. But it's pretty aggressive and this transportation stuff is, is a way to get, get down to the, to the statutory goals.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Council.
Can you tell me about the opioid settlement, the federal opioid settlement and how much money we could possibly get from that over the next seventeen years?
You know, that's, I don't really have any clients in that issue space. I mean, I'm generally aware of it, but I don't know what kind of dollars. And from what I understand, I think our Attorney General, didn't want to accept the last offer that they got from the industry. So I think that's still an ongoing thing. I don't know if they nailed it down.
It is. And we signed about two months ago, the one Washington MOU with the Attorney General's Office and several other counties. King County is treated a little bit differently. But all the rest of the counties and cities within those counties all signed on to one of them. And there's a breakdown of the percentage in there and I'd be happy to resend that mail out to all the council members. It's, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's not nothing either. So if I remember right, but I can go back and find that.
Did I have that right? Jeff is the number final or are they trying to get more?
They're trying to.
Okay. Glad I didn't get that wrong.
Couple of their questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, and Build Back Better, the construction plans, is rural broadband part of that? Or there's, is there available money for rural broadband?
I, I believe, well, I know that the state of Washington received a, a lot of the original ARPA money went towards broadband and, but frankly, in the capital budget last, last year in particular, but this biennium, they've made significant investments in that, like hundreds of millions of dollars. I'm not as, I don't know what the, sort of the skinny down version of Build Back Better that they're contemplating. I mean, I watch the news like you guys do and I know that they're negotiating, but I'm not in that room. So I don't, I don't know if there's anything specifically earmarked for that.
One last question, but I don't, I see, a credit needed here in the room, but I want to talk about a state bank.
Okay.
Possibilities of the state bank. I know it's been scaled back. There is a possibility that we might get a North Dakota model. But now it's scaled back away to only like maybe funding infrastructure.
Yes.
And can you tell us a little bit about that? And what are possibilities of getting some money for, for a state bank?
Well, the state bank's mission seems to morph with the political reality of at least keeping it alive until the next biennium. So, you know, sometimes, they talk about being able to provide student debt loan relief. Student loan debt relief, or then they shift to infrastructure. I would argue if, if the focus is on infrastructure, we already have that in place with the Public Works Assistance Account. The problem is, is that it gets swept so many times. A constitutional amendment to protect that might be a better way to go. Because, you know, low or no interest loans are available. The problem is the financing mechanism, mechanism gets tapped. I think right now they're in the process of putting together a possible business plan. There was a proviso in the operating budget in twenty twenty-one. They called for that. I know they were, they've completed the first round of, of research, but I don't believe that plan has been produced yet in terms of, how it would work, how it would be regulated and the types of services they could provide. So that's an ongoing conversation. There are some people in the legislature that really care about that and, particularly Senator Hasagawa from Seattle, he's, he's been a big proponent of that for as long as I've worked in the legislature, which I won't tell you how many years that is. So it's an ongoing discussion and what it ultimately looks like and does, still to be determined. If it was modeled after something, you're right, North Dakota, but North Dakota is actually the only state bank in the country right now. And I think that was established back in nineteen nineteen, if I'm having my dates right. So, to be determined.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a kind of a thought, you know, I know we're getting closer to talking about our priorities and what we're going to ask you to go to bat for us for. And I'm, I, I noticed, and at least in the Moving Ahead Washington package related to active transportation, that there are, sort of like line items or, you know, caveats for chronically distressed communities, that sort of thing. Does this give us a little bit more of a leg up, do you think, for, like a multimodal path project or roundabouts and that kind of stuff to go through that mechanism or?
That's, I don't know, I know that there's project list right now, but I don't know if the money for multimodal in, the Move Ahead Washington Plan has been earmarked throughout the entire seventeen years. I would have to, I could get back to you on that. I just know that in the initial project list, there wasn't much in there for Shelton. But there may be grant programs that have been set up on that.
Yeah, maybe that's what I was kind of leaning towards.
I, I can find that out for you pretty easily.
Yeah, that might, might help us focus in on a couple of projects.
We're actually pursuing or going to pursue one of those through a grant program that was funded through Move Forward Washington for the, the multimode trail all through town, from Neeland down to one-on-one. We're pursuing that right now, I believe, at least for design dollars.
Yeah, great.
See, Jeff knows.
That's kind of like looking at both of you. Between the two, you got to figure it out.
Troy, do you know if there's any talk about fixing the gap in mental health? I mean, there's just a huge gap there.
There's always talk of that. And I know that in the operating budget in twenty twenty-one, there was pretty significant investment there. And then on the capital side, they've put a lot of resources in, into housing, mental health, hospital beds all across the state. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but it's not nothing. It's a lot. Hundreds of millions of dollars. So they're trying to tackle it. It's just a huge problem. And I'm not sure if we can spend our way out of that one, I think. Yeah. I wish I had the solution. I'd be a very rich man, but I don't. And it's a tough one. But there has been significant investments and I don't expect that to change, even regardless of which party controls. I think that's one of the few things where there is pretty broad bipartisan agreement that we need to do more in that arena. So I don't expect that trend to change anytime soon.
I just, I think we need more beds and places where people can be looked after and not be on the streets or in jail or, there's just, there's just so many that you see around that don't belong on the street. They belong in a, in a facility. Maybe they are somewhat functioning, but they belong somewhere, so we're going to give them their medication and, and get them to their appointments and, you know, and just helps them. There's just nothing, there's nothing out there for them.
It, it takes a significant intervention in a person's life to change the course. And typically that's jail or prison. It, but that, that, that's not happening as much anymore as it used to. And there's some challenges within voluntary commitments and things like that, that I know there's bipartisan group of legislators working on issues, those issues in a meaningful way. But yeah, it usually takes that, that disruption in your lifestyle to make a change and, our opportunities to, to do that for folks is, it's hard. So that's, I think, where the solution lies. I don't have the silver bullet there, but I, I know there are some good people on both sides of the aisle working on the issue.
Thank you.
I think that's a pretty good transition to getting into priorities. If it makes sense, we can break them down by policy priorities, capital priorities, and then transportation priorities, if that, that works well for you. I know we've talked a little bit about what priorities of the council. I know we've talked a little bit about what priorities the council would have and would like to ask myself and Troy to pursue. During the next session. One of those being mental health, helping to close the gap on mental health services. I am almost positive, although I won't be for a little while, that the Association of Washington Cities will have that as a component of their legislative agenda next year. And typically we've appended their legislative priorities to our own. So we also support those. However, we could also do a standalone initiative for that as well. If council is in favor of, favor of that approach. But I would also be interested to hear what other policy priorities you'd like us to pursue, if there are any others.
Water quality. And this, and sewage.
I, I believe on. We're, that we've been talking about for years is spray fields or injection wells, so we don't put any more. Exluent water out in the bay. So we keep our, our waters clean and our shellfish business going. Is that what you're?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that that could be a policy position. It could also be a request on the capital side.
And typically, just to chime in, Jeff, how we've operated in the past on policy issues, we do tend to, to. Chime in along with the Association of Washington Cities. And I've signed the city in supporter and opposition to bills that, that go against that. But, and I, I told Jeff this and I'll tell you, if there are specific Shelton related stories to tell. On any policy, good or bad, that you need me to share that story with, I'm, I'm happy to do that. That tends to be effective. Especially somebody like me who's, I don't, I don't testify on a lot of local government bills. But if I had a specific Shelton story to tell, I'm available to do that. And quite frankly, it's even more compelling if, if one of you wants to come testify on something like that. I can always help hold your hand through that process. It's a little scary at first, but when you do it, you, you get used to it and it's not that, not that tough. But those are the most compelling stories when actual elected representatives from the, the city come and tell their story. So I'm, I'm available to help you with that. If something comes up.
You'd have to hold both of my hands.
I can do that. I can do that.
Yeah, preservation or extension of the point oh nine funds for economic development organizations. That's, I know that's a. Something where we've been talking about with the EDC and others, so. Something we're, we're focused on.
I think that's only going to grow the need for that as we come out of the.
Yep.
The pandemic and try to fight off a recession. Those are important.
Yeah, I mentioned this earlier, but rural broadband and connectivity, especially if we get shut down again. So I think it's a really high priority. And if you'll want to attract more people to come to Shelton and live in Shelton. Internet, fast internet, cheap internet, good internet is something that we could. Provide. Especially from city limits.
Yeah.
And with that, if we get shut down again, knock on wood and find something. I want to see that happen.
Well, I think that. Especially with the school shutting down after the initial phase, that really highlighted some of the gaps all across state communities that we have. Particularly rural ones, which is why they did make a pretty significant investment in that over the last two years. But there's more work to do, no question about it.
With, with the one on one interchange via an ask?
Yeah, on the capital side. So we can get into capital now. So a couple of things that we've talked about are. Supporting future water infrastructure with a potential ask for the Anglo side booster. Up top. I have that on my list at council's favor of me keeping that there. Great. The other part is expansion of our wastewater capabilities at Satellite Treatment Plant. With the idea eventually of transitioning eventually, meaning twenty years from now. Transitioning away from discharge to the bay to support our tribal partners and to support our commercial shellfish growers. And adds additional water to stream, in-stream flows and to our aquifers and just overall health of the community. So I can keep those items on the list. And any other, other than transportation, any other capital asks that. We might be interested in pursuing. We have a couple of smaller ones potentially. With things like HVAC systems and those kind of things that we want to add to our requests just to. Kind of even it out. So they're not all gigantic, you know, two million, three million dollar requests. There's also some other things. We can use, but interested in hearing your thoughts on anything of that nature.
Are we going to potentially ask for support on the, excuse me, wastewater distribution switch? And property acquisition?
So that's part of the way I view that is that's our own local investment into that project. So when we go to ask our partners in at the state level, we can show that we have invested in moving that direction. And we would like them to partner with us to help bring that ultimate vision to reality. That's the way it's, but we can certainly add that if that's something the council would love to do.
Two other things we've been discussing both here and just recently would be upgrades at the library, which continues to be the deck and now the fire system. As we heard, but the other one is, as we're talking about moving the public works lay down yard and incorporating some community space. It was an opportunity to, to look at those. Projects that are already within kind of the structure of what we're looking at to look at those.
Good.
And while not specific city projects, I anticipate we will get asked for letters of support or at least. Feedback on both the Great Ben Center for Music Campus project they're looking at and the Wild Side Mason County Welcome Center concepts. Neither one of those are completely up and off the ground, but they're on our radar. And as we're looking at. Where those dollars are going in Mason County, I think it's important we're aware of those as well.
And working with our judge to maybe redo this room where it's safer for everybody. I think that would be something we could probably get done. Our judge has explained to us, we have a direct line of sight from that window to the judge. It would be pretty easy to cause some problems.
And to you.
But model this room to make it safe for everybody involved.
That's a challenge across the state at our courthouses and here locally. I mean, Thurston County, they're. Struggling with how to make their courthouse safe. And it's not a unique problem. Unfortunately, I, I haven't seen a lot of resources from the state level that's made its way down to the addressing those problems, but. It's going to get worse, not better. So I think we need to be, I think we need to be raising that flag because it affects all of us.
Yeah, our judge has some ideas to move the doors. It wouldn't be that difficult, but probably expensive.
I hear of another thing that, another thing that we've. Discussed kind of in that same vein is that from what I understand from you, Troy, there was a significant investment from the state when a lot of the, the. Jail facilities were updated a number of years ago. And so a lot of communities, especially rural communities. As they have grown, but also as the regulations have changed and the state has. Closed Western and other things that we've seen more of a local impact. Is there an opportunity to look at some sort of. Coalition similarly to what we did with the, the basin project upgrades and, and look at a statewide effort to allocate funding to. Upgrade, add to et cetera, those jail facilities so that. We can get back to some accountability of those issues and then also look at the other intenum support services for that.
Yeah, for jails specifically, it's been tough sledding in the capital budget over the years. So that would take a pretty significant philosophical change on the legislature's part. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that because the need's clearly there. And it's not just us, it's communities everywhere. But I. Trying to remember the exact conversation, but I think I did a search for you guys a, a session or two ago for jail funding. In the capital budget over the last ten to fifteen years and I couldn't find much. So that would be sort of a new initiative, but I think if, if it's important, we can, we can start making the pitch for it.
And perhaps that's something we also want to take to AWC and see what the interest level is with our partners, because it's definitely something that folks are facing across the state.
Right.
Yeah. From what I, what I've heard, many of particularly more rural counties jail facilities were built with state dollars in the nineteen eighties. So looking at that, looking at the possibility, that is certainly something I can talk with our partner cities at AWC about.
We had a park advisory board meeting last night and we might have a lot of capital projects coming up and we're taking money away from our operating budget. Fund them. So is there a way to get more capital money in for parks and a multi-motor parkways, multi-motor parkways to connect our parks together? And to have park space for our citizens.
Yeah. And so we, we can certainly ask for that, but I mentioned the, the trail, the multimodal trail that's going through a grant program that's coming out of that. Seventeen billion that Troy mentioned earlier. So it's coming from the state. But not as a direct appropriation as a grant program administered through executive department, probably Congress. Although maybe RCO.
Since jail is probably going to be a flop, funding for therapeutic court to continue. Because that was a two hundred thousand dollar grant and that's going to dry up here fairly quickly, I would assume. I'm not sure if there's. Funding mechanisms for that, but.
Where, where did the grant come from? Do you remember?
And that was joint between the county and the city. So both district and meeting court.
And the data I've seen on that has been pretty supportive for continuing that program, but I'll look more, more deeply into that. So on the transportation side, are there any projects in particular that council has their eye on? That we would look for a, a direct appropriation out of the transportation budget or. Move forward the way we have so far pursuing those through different grant opportunities rather than direct appropriation. Because we are, as an organization, heavily involved in PR PTO. In fact, our city engineer is the president of that technical advisory group this year. And we've seen some success since we've gotten involved in that group. We've seen some success on that end with funding for certain programs. Also the safe routes to school that we have worked on, a lot of the funding mechanisms for Western Gateway have come through. Grant projects, TIP and otherwise. But if there are, another, if there is another ask out of the transportation budget, I'd be happy to, to listen, mark it down. See what we can get Troy to do.
A bundled roundabout project, the interchange at. Wallace and North, or excuse me, Wallace at Walmart there, the state interchange. We know the state just wanted to transfer that asset to us. As well as completion of the Shelton Springs, North Thirteenth and Wallace and Shelton Springs at. Whatever Alpine Way. So upcoming development in those areas are going to cause traffic impacts. What am I thinking? Am I thinking the wrong road? Whatever by Olympic College, we've had a lot of traffic safety, pad, pad traffic safety issues there. That whole North Shelton area is expanding here in the coming years with residential construction and construction potentially across the highway. Which is going to increase traffic in that area. And then I had to have a question, maybe Troy, you know this or not, I'm not sure, but does complete streets? That concept apply to local jurisdictions as well?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know the answer.
So we have adopted the complete streets resolution. I believe we adopted that in twenty nineteen. So we would be eligible for certain grant programs.
But, but does that mean if we're making an improvement on a, on a classified roadway that we then have to bring up ADA and everything else up to standards?
Yes.
So that expands then our, yeah, our scope pretty significantly, cost wise. Interesting.
For, for the area that councillor Schmidt was talking about, the Shelton Springs, Wallace and Neeland, can we tie in the safe route to school stuff? Is that pays for a lot of the?
And active transportation as well.
Right.
And I said, sorry, bundled project, I mean, that as those four roundabouts as a project.
Yeah.
That's all right. There are some streets in the city, major streets that have no longer street lights. For people to cross safely, looking at, just talked to a person, a citizen the other day. And they were wondering if we would be able to get flashing on some of those.
Yeah. So a lot of those, like the one at Olympic Highway North and High. Are a part of the local road safety program that council adopted. I think in February earlier this year. But that makes us eligible for state grants to include those. And we actually got a lot of support from, I believe it's Department of Transportation. For funding for that project at I because of the seriousness of some of the instances that have happened there. So that's already kind of in the funding stream. We can certainly look for other opportunities.
I'm, I'm thinking about Fourth Street where we took the light out, people trying to cross pedestrians, trying to cross wherever. Well, the other part of that same project or that program has said, and take rest to schools is at third. At the post office, the other end of the block, you said that there would actually be crosswalks on a first, third, fifth and seventh.
Yep.
We should kind of round that.
Very good.
We like the odd numbers.
Well, and this, this applies to, to the capital budget too, but more importantly to the transpo. State doesn't like to be the first money in. So if you have a, a local jurisdiction who's already invested, that helps. And then if you go after grants and get them, that helps too. And if the other thing is sort of a community visioning process, I know with the connector that. You know, we had gone through that exercise a few years prior and that helped us get that million dollars for the roundabout. So all of those things can kind of. Bolster your ask if you can check some of those boxes going in.
And the other part too is potentially using some of the TBD dollars for matching funds to. Leverage those dollars for economic development assets like I want the Kyway North, you know, the, the larger roads that carry most of the cars. For the community.
Thank you for saying that, because we had that on our list at some point, just working with legislation on. The transmission benefit districts extensions, because they are, they, whether they're one and done, right? Unless you have debt tied to them.
Right. So in that one, Trey talked about that at the end of last session, because it seemed like everybody was on board with doing that regardless of party affiliation last year. And then it just died right at the end and couldn't quite figure out why. But I would, I would bet pretty heavily that that's going to be on the legislature's radar. For this longer section this year.
That's a policy thing then, at that point.
I believe it was on the AWC policy block last year.
Yeah. So we're, we'll be checking on that. But yeah, absolutely. We'll pay attention to that.
I, I thought that was a done deal and mysteriously didn't make the last cutoff. And I, yeah, I can't tell you what that spoke my pay grade. I don't know what happened.
That's interesting. Do you recall if there would, if in, in whatever initial conversations, would that have required, if we were to extend that, would it have required a vote of the people?
Yes. The initial, the bill language that I saw that ultimately died would require a one-time vote to extend it. I can't recall the exact language, but it would be.
But we'd have to re-campaign on that.
Yes.
Okay. It, it passed pretty well here. It passed, it was over, well over sixty percent. Any other questions for Troy or Jeff? All right. And thank you, Troy.
Well, my pleasure.
We'll move on to council. Any items from discussion?
Thank you, Troy.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, then we'll adjourn this meeting at six forty-eight PM.